You want to test the mic? All right, we're going to test the audio real quick. Yeah. All right, we're just about ready to get started. We got one more council member coming in and one online. We appreciate everyone's patience. We're trying to figure out what a quorum means at this meeting. If we need a quorum of the city council, or if we can do a quorum of both bodies collectively. We need one more council member. So we're going to hold, and just as soon as we have one more council member, we'll begin.
Through the chair, just wanted to inform you, we are currently also awaiting on council member Matulak, who is currently trying to log into the Zoom.
And then, once he logs in, we'll have quorum, and we'll start. All right, thank you all for your continued patience. We are just waiting on one additional council member. All right. All right, we have a quorum, and I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Thank you all for your patience. We're going to start with our pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand and join us for the pledge. All right, thank you all. I'll ask our city clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Soros.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Matias.
Here.
Let's see, Matulak. Councilmember Matulak, have you joined us virtually? Okay. Palmaris.
Here.
Planning Commission Chair Taylor. Vice Chair Douglas.
President.
Commissioners Blind. Medarios.
Present.
Beasley-Stansberry. White.
Present.
I will note for the record that the Vice Mayor Braganza is absent, and currently, councilmembers Ledigou and Matulak and Planning Commissioner Wellbuena is also absent.
Thank you. So we just have one item this evening, which is our joint workshop, which is a follow-up presentation from our first workshop that we had a few months ago from our Economic Planning Systems Incorporated regarding the Inclusionary Housing and Commercial Linkage Fee Study. And we will be hearing that presentation and providing direction to staff. We have our planning director, Kristen Pollitt, here to introduce the item, and I'll turn it over to you. And what we'll do is we'll have you all go through the whole presentation, we'll provide an opportunity for public comment, and then we'll turn it over to the Planning Commission for comments, followed by the council for comments and questions. So go right ahead when you're ready.
Here we go. Thank you. So I'm Kristen Pollitt, and the Director of Planning Development Services, and I am just going to give a brief introduction here. I have with me this evening our Long Range Planning Manager Hector Rojas, and also we have Darren Smith and Rosanna Renn from EPS, which is the consulting firm who we're working with on this project. So just to kind of get us started, I wanted to remind everyone that the purpose of this workshop is really to continue the conversation that we had started last July, talking about inclusionary housing and commercial linkage. Also, the reason that we're here talking about these two topics is because we have two programs very specifically from the housing element that basically, well, their program B 2.1.1 and B 2.1.2. They require staff to do some preliminary research on these topics, talk to developers, and then bring forth an ordinance of some shape or form to the city council for consideration. So in order to implement these policies, we have started this work. EPS has preliminary findings that we're going to continue to talk about, and I think at this point, I'll just go ahead and hand it over to Darren, who's going to get started on the presentation.
Good evening. Again, I'm Darren Smith with Economic and Planning Systems. Nice to be back with you again. How shall we? There it is. All right, everybody has a view of the screen in front of them? Terrific. This evening, we want to sort of pick up where we left off. When we were here in July, we spoke at some length about inclusionary housing programs and the interest in having one here in Vallejo. We didn't actually quite get to the commercial linkage fee program, so we're going to kind of get that in the mix as well this evening, a little earlier than we did last time. So tonight, what we want to talk about are an overview of inclusionary housing programs, the commercial linkage fee programs, our feasibility findings and conclusions. And then, one of the questions that was raised last time is, well, you know, these are two things that cities do. What else, what other tools does the city of Vallejo have available to them to advance the construction and preservation of affordable housing? So staff is actually going to go through a number of other programs in addition to the inclusionary housing and commercial linkage fee, so that you have a broader context for how these particular programs might fit into a larger toolbox, if you will. And I'm having a little trouble seeing you around the flag there, but I'll lean every once in a while. Thank you so much. And then, at the end, we are seeking some direction on where you would like to go from here. Thank you very much, City Manager. So when we were with you in July, a number of questions came up, a number of opinions were expressed. There was interest in continuing to explore the inclusionary program despite a recognition of some current feasibility considerations and challenges. We were asked to look into options to delay or phase in the implementation of the program to kind of let the market catch up to what is needed for it to work most effectively. Some questions about other housing strategies or programs in the city's purview, and again, staff will be going through some of those this evening. We were asked to check in with developers again. We had already done so prior to the previous visit, but then we spent some more time with several active developers in your community, understanding their issues and concerns and hopes and dreams. And then, again, the commercial linkage fee didn't quite make it to the table last time, so we're going to make sure we get to that this evening. And so, you know, these are our responses. So a little bit more on inclusionary housing programs themselves. These have been around since 1974 throughout America. The purpose is to help cities fund the construction of affordable housing by really leveraging market rate development and requiring new housing development to include, hence the name inclusionary, to include within them some number of units that are priced below market rate at various levels of affordability. And many communities allow developers to pay a fee in lieu of providing those units. Those fees are then collected by the city and made available typically to other affordable housing developers, people who, or organizations that build usually 100% affordable housing, and the money goes to help subsidize the construction of those projects that are 100% affordable, rather than mixed income in the way that they are in an inclusionary program. There are 240 different communities in California that have inclusionary housing policies, so it is very common. You'll see on the map in the lower right there, these are present throughout the United States, but most common in California and New Jersey. If you take a little peek at the dark blue shade there in New Jersey, they are common there as well, but also found throughout the United States. There's over 1,000 of these programs around the country. How it works, these programs, this is an example. This is an example. No, that's not an example. We have a new attendee on this screen. I don't know if that's affecting, yes. I figured. Where is the computer? Can I drive this somewhere? Terrific. Thank you. So we just have an illustration of how this program would work for a 100-unit project.
Really quickly, I don't mean to interrupt you. Is there a way that we can re-unpin Councilmember Matulak to increase the screen size of the PowerPoint presentation? Because the screen that is facing all of us, it's now not legible. That's a question for Manny. We're working on it.
I'll try to go back.
Thank you, Manny. Normally, it's fine, but because we're...
Councilmember Matulak, can you turn off your video, please?
All right, that did the trick.
Thank you. And so, again, just a quick illustration of how these programs work. If you had a 100-unit project, and let's say that you had a 12% requirement, typically in California where these are common, they tend to be anywhere from 5% to 20% of units, but most typically in the range of 10% to 15%. So we're just illustrating that in this case, you might ask for 12% of the units to be offered at moderate income levels. So in that case, the development might provide 88 market rate units and 12 units at moderate income prices. A rental project, maybe that has a different requirement, and let's say that's 10% inclusionary requirement with half of those at moderate income and half of those at low income. In that case, the developer would build 90 market rate units and 10 affordable units. Alternatively, most communities, actually, all communities are required to have alternative means of compliance, especially for rental housing, where the developer can make use of another way to comply with the requirement. And most communities offer an in-lug fee, where a developer can pay some money, and all of their units can then be market rate units, but they will give money to the city that then becomes available for other affordable housing projects, either through new construction or preservation. So in this example, in the ownership category, let's say the fee was $24 a square foot. You would have, let's say, a 2,000-square-foot typical home, and there's 100 of them. And so, if it's $24 per square foot times 2,000 square feet per unit times 100 units, then that project would generate $4.8 million of in-lug fees. But all of their units would be market rate. On the rental side... On the rental side, let's say the fee is $19 a square foot, and your average unit is 1,000 square feet, then 100-unit project would generate $1.9 million that could, again, be made available to act as a local match for new developments done typically by developers of 100% affordable housing projects. We've looked at the programs in a number of comparable communities. Elsewhere in Solano County, the only community that currently has an inclusionary program is Benicia. Their program on the rental, or I'm sorry, on the for-sale side is a total of 10%, with 5% of those units being at moderate income and the other five at low income. And, but other cities in the general area are anywhere, again, from 10% to 15%. Concord's program is 15% on the for-sale side. Again, split between low and moderate income units. El Cerrito is 12%, all moderate. Hayward's is 12%, split low and moderate. Oakland and Richmond both require 10% moderate income units. Fairfield and Vacaville have been exploring the introduction of inclusionary housing, but have thus far not elected to adopt a program yet. On the rental side, very similar story. The same communities have these programs. Benicia's requirement there is 10%, again, split between low and moderate. Concord actually has only a 6% requirement, but it includes moderate, low, and even very low income units. It's the only one of these comparable communities that includes very low income units. And for definitionally, that means households earning up to 50% of the area median income. El Cerrito, a total of 10%. Hayward, a total of 6% on rentals. Oakland and Richmond, 10%. And again, Benicia is the only community in Solano County that currently has a rental inclusionary program, but Fairfield and Vacaville have been exploring it this same calendar year. On, let me pause there. So that's context for inclusionary. I know we've talked about some of those, that same information previously. But before we get into the commercial linkage fee, are there any questions about the status of inclusionary programs or what they're meant to do?
So I think we have a couple of options here, and I would kind of defer to the, kind of look at the planning department. What we could do is have the questions and discussion now run inclusionary zoning and then give our direction and then do the commercial linkage. Or we could continue with the rest of the presentation and take all the questions at the end. It sounds like maybe doing the, continuing the presentation, because last time we ran out of room, time for the commercial linkage fee. So we'll hold, we'll hold our questions and comments on both.
Good idea. Thank you. All right, commercial linkage fees, we did not get to this last time. What these are, are a requirement on new job generating uses, new retail, new office, new industrial, new hotel, et cetera, where you are making the argument, and there needs to be a nexus finding of this. You're making the argument that these new developments, new space, new buildings of these types are bringing new jobs to your community. Not all of those jobs will pay enough for the people who have those jobs to afford market rate housing in your community. And therefore, they, the introduction of those jobs is creating more demand for affordable housing. And so you have a fee on development whereby they pay some, usually fairly small portion of their overall development costs goes to an affordable housing fund that then becomes available for preservation or construction of new affordable housing units meant to offset the impact on demand for affordable housing in your community. There has to be a nexus study for these where it's established, okay, you have 100,000 square feet of new retail, let's say. How many people are going to work in that space? How much money do they make? Can they make enough money to afford market rate housing? And if not, how much, you know, what is the offset between the cost of housing versus what they can afford? And you set the fee accordingly. So this is just an illustration of how that works. You have a new office building in the upper left. We estimate the number of new employees and how many households are formed by those employees and how much money they make, and how many housing units are required for them. And then the fee is established to offset the cost of producing those units. So the city collects that money, makes it available to various programs and developers to provide new housing or preserve existing affordable housing. In this case, we've looked at the same communities. Very few of them have a program of this sort. The city of Richmond has a program. They charge $2 a square foot for each of their different types of development, commercial and lodging and industrial. In this case, commercial means both office and retail. The same fee at $2 a square foot. Oakland has a program that's around $8 a square foot for commercial and industrial. But most of the communities, and none of the communities in Solano County have programs of this sort at this time. On feasibility, we introduced some of this information last time. We're going to keep it succinct this evening. There is a current challenge in the housing market to produce even market rate housing. This graph is from MTC's Vital Signs. It's a collection of data regarding permitting in, throughout the nine-county Bay Area. What it shows is that, going back, this data goes back to 1967. This past year, 2024, there were fewer new housing units permitted throughout the nine-county Bay Area than in any year in the last 67 years other than the year 2009, when we were in a housing-driven recession. The reason for this is because housing costs have gone up significantly. That is, the cost to build housing, construction costs, labor costs, financing costs, and the value of those units are depressed some due to higher interest rates on mortgages, higher interest rates on everything that needs to be borrowed to produce and acquire housing. And so what we see is we're in a down cycle for housing throughout the Bay Area. This is not a Vallejo issue, it's not a Solano County issue. It's an entire Bay Area issue where housing permitting is way down compared to historic norms. And that is a, hopefully, temporary condition, but it is a real condition that a lot of developers are having a difficult time making projects pencil. The value of the project is not enough greater than the cost of the project to get financing and make the project work. But as highlighted at the bottom, housing has been feasible in the past, and it will be feasible at some point in the future. So this is, as I say, very hopefully and almost definitely a temporary condition, but it is the condition we're in now. So we want to keep track of that as we're considering the timing and scale of introducing any kind of requirement, new requirements on housing production. Do inclusionary requirements impact feasibility? The answer is yes, of course they do. What we're doing with an inclusionary housing program, and we've helped to adopt these all over the state for several decades, we are asking developers to provide some of their units at a lower price than they otherwise would. And that does not change the cost of construction, but it does change the value of their project. Instead of selling all of them at, let's say, for round numbers, $1 million, they sell most of them at $1 million, and the other 10%, 15%, whatever the requirement is, sells for well less than $1 million. And so the value, the aggregate value of all those units comes down. The cost to produce them stays the same. So the profit margin, the threshold for getting financing and so forth narrows considerably. There are other factors, of course, aside from inclusionary requirements. And those other factors are what is mostly driving that previous slide, where we saw that housing permitting is down so dramatically. It's the cost of land, it's the cost of construction and labor and materials. Financing, all of those things, impact fees to a certain extent. You know, all of these things go into it. But inclusionary housing is definitely one of those things that goes into it. You have to be, you know, conscientious about the level of that requirement if, in fact, you want housing to continue to grow in your community for the near future. Here we have an illustration of the impacts on feasibility. On the left, we're showing a project that is, say, it's worth, or it costs $10 million to construct this project. So let's call that 20 townhomes, for example. The, that's the cost to produce it. A developer is going to need to make some kind of profit on that. So we've shown here the profit at a 15% ratio. So they need to get at least $11.5 million to cover the $10 million development cost plus the profit margin that they need. In that first example, we're showing that they, you know, if they could make $13 million selling these units, that that is a feasible project. It exceeds the cost of construction and it exceeds their minimum threshold for getting financing and having a feasible project. So that project works. The middle scenario, we have the same development cost, $10 million. This is one with inclusionary housing units. We have the same development cost of $10 million, the same threshold for developer profit to get financing. But because we have inclusionary units, some of those units still sell for the maximum market rate price and others do not. And so the aggregate value goes down from $13 million in this example to $11 million, or just under $11 million. And in that case, the value is not in excess of the financing needed for the project. And so that is an infeasible project. As I mentioned, many communities offer in-lu fees as an alternative means of compliance. On the right-hand side, we have a slightly alternated, altered scenario in which the development cost is shown at $11 million. Now, this is the $10 million that you had before, plus, let's say, you have to pay $1 million in in-lu fees. So now your cost goes from $10 million to $11 million. You can still sell all of those units at market rate for $13 million, and you've got a viable project. So there's many different ways to approach this. These are illustrative numbers only, but they are meant to show the dynamics of how these things affect feasibility. We looked at feasibility of different types of housing in Vallejo under current market conditions. And as presented a few months ago, we have concerns that many of these types of projects are facing challenges, specifically because the cost of construction has grown so quickly relative to the value of those units on a market rate basis, that for the time being, what we're seeing, and this is from our math and this is from talking with developers, we believe that for-sale, single-family detached units of, on sort of larger lots, let's say the units are, here, we've estimated an average unit size of 2,200 square feet. We believe that those units could sell for almost $800,000 and cost almost $800,000 to produce. They are marginally feasible. We show a little bit of headroom on those types of units right now. Arguably, if there was a lot of headroom, that would suggest that there's room to ask for affordability in those projects. Right now, we're not seeing that, that sort of buffer of feasibility. On all of the other types that we've looked at, smaller lot, single-family, multifamily condos, and two different densities of multifamily rentals, we estimate that the cost of construction exceed the value of those units, even if they were all market rate. And again, this is not just a Vallejo situation. This is a situation that we have throughout the Bay Area where the costs of construction are exceeding the value of these units under current market circumstances. So that is cause for concern about introducing a new requirement on these types of development and expecting them to continue to go forward in the same way that they would without that requirement. But, and we have the same note at the bottom of this screen, housing has been feasible in the past and it will be feasible again in the future. This is just where we are right now. We were asked to speak again with developers, and we've had the opportunity to speak with several developers active in your community on projects large and small. And consistent with what we heard last time, including from some folks who presented or called into the meeting in July, there is concern that adding an inclusionary requirement would cause projects to hit financial walls, essentially, that they would reduce the value of the units. And these projects are having enough difficulty getting financing to move forward right now. There would be concern about continuing some of these projects here in Vallejo. One of the, several of the developers indicated that having an in-lu fee option or alternative means of compliance could be a more feasible approach than requiring the units within the projects right now, particularly if that in-lu fee is scaled in such a way that it's a relatively small cost to the project. They should be able to absorb, you know, a few thousand dollars a unit. But that's a very different prospect than providing some units at hundreds of thousands of dollars, in some case, of subsidy to produce the units at the income levels that are common for inclusionary units. Other comments included that, you know, market rate developers in mixed income projects, they don't typically have access to the same types of funding sources that 100% affordable developers do, tax credit programs and other various state and federal programs. Usually, an inclusionary project is otherwise a market rate project, and they're just required to do some of the units at below market rate prices, but they don't get out and get tax credits. They don't get the same kinds of funding because they aren't offering the same services that those projects might, and they don't have the same requirements and so forth. So it's a very different financial prospect to be including some units at those very low income prices or low income prices without the sorts of subsidy that a typical affordable housing developer has access to. As I mentioned, these challenges are not unique to Vallejo at all. We've seen examples from throughout the Bay Area and throughout California of communities that have been doing feasibility studies and deciding that they need to make some changes to their existing inclusionary policies to reflect the current, albeit temporary, market conditions. So Redwood City, just two months ago, elected to reduce their inclusionary requirements by 25% in recognition that they weren't getting the same level of housing that they were getting previously. San Francisco, in 2023, reduced their inclusionary requirements by almost half, from 22% to 24% for many projects, down to 12% to 15%. Santa Ana, down in Southern California, reduced their fees from $15 a square foot to $5 a square foot in recognition of these headwinds. And Santa Rosa reduced their overall requirement from 15% to 10%. And that predates the pandemic and the current conditions that we are facing right now. So there's flexibility in these ways for communities to change their policies, change their requirements over time to reflect the economic conditions that they're in. And many of these communities have availed themselves of those opportunities. On the commercial linkage fee, what we've done is, we did that math on, you know, if you have X square feet of office building or industrial building or hotel, and that employs this many people in a typical project of that sort, and this is how much money they make, and this is how many households they form, because not every individual worker needs their own home, of course. You, many households have more than one worker. We've calculated that for some of the uses, commercial, office and retail in particular, you could potentially, for, from a nexus, a legal nexus basis, support a fee up to $90 a square foot, from that perspective. From a feasibility perspective, it's a very different story. $90 a square foot would add a considerable amount to the cost of that project and be a significant deterrent to those projects moving forward in Vallejo or anywhere. So what most communities do is they do the math on the nexus side, then they adopt a fee that is a very small fraction of the maximum fee that has been calculated through the nexus analysis. So it's typical that you'll see fees in the range, as we saw in Richmond, $2 a square foot, Oakland, $8 a square foot. The highest I've ever seen is in the teens to twenties on a per-square-foot basis down in Silicon Valley. But the nexus-based fees are commonly- But the, the nexus-based fees are commonly three figures, $100 or more per square foot on, on the calculation. But the adoption is typically very small percentage of that maximum fee because of feasibility concerns. So here we've shown, you have a development pipeline of commercial and lodging and industrial development. Almost half of, well, a little over 400,000 square feet of development in your pipeline on the commercial side. If those projects had been subject to a fee at $2 a square foot, they could have generated about $850,000 for you, which could have been made available to affordable housing developers. That, to be frank, could subsidize a few units, a handful of units, maybe 10 in terms of the, the local money that typically goes into these projects. It's 10, tends to be anywhere from 50 to $150,000 a unit for these types of developments. So it's not going to get you 100 units at $850,000. But it could have given you a dozen or so units, which is not nothing. But we want to be clear on the scale of what it would mean to have a fee at that level. And again, that is the level that Richmond imposes their fees at right now. So our conclusions on the inclusionary side is that adopting a fee, or I'm sorry, not a fee, but an onsite inclusionary requirement, common in terms of percentages to what these other communities have, at something like 10 to 15% at typically low income units, that is very likely to have a negative effect on feasibility of projects going forward in the near future. Not forever, but in the near future. And so one of the questions that will be posed to you a little later is, what do we do about that? Do you want to move forward? Do you want to think about ways to phase it in over time with respect to, you know, finding some market circumstance that will change, that you can track and say, okay, now's the time? Or do you just want to put it on pause for the time being? Second conclusion on the commercial linkage fee is that can have a negative impact on development. If you adopt a fee that's considerable, if you adopt a fee similar to what your, what other communities adopt at a couple dollars a square foot, it's kind of rounding error on projects of that scale. And can generate some money. We saw an example, you know, getting close to a million dollars. That's not nothing. And it wouldn't have a real chilling effect at $2 a square foot. It shouldn't make a huge difference to your commercial developers to have to pay a fee of that sort. But adopting it at a much higher level definitely could and might be something to consider with respect to your other economic development goals and job generation goals and, and all of that for your community. Cool policy tools and options. We will be passing this to Hector in a moment, but a couple things for your consideration. On the implementation side, there are a number of ways that inclusionary housing policies deal with the various concerns that I've addressed. One is to consider phasing in the requirements over time. You could adopt a program now and say, in year X or in circumstance X, it will take effect. You could have market-based triggers. For instance, the city of, what's it, Long Beach adopted a program. And they said, well, we're not going to do it immediately. We will start this after we've had 200 new for-sale housing units entitled. So that creates a little bit of an incentive and a little bit of a race for developers to get in and, while the getting's good, before the program kicks in. So a little bit of an incentive there. But it also reflects the fact that these are, projects need time to factor in the costs associated with these programs. You have the option to have different fee levels or different requirements in different parts of the city, or different types of housing. So again, I gave the example of rental versus for sale. You can change it by the density of the project. If you are less concerned about large slot, single-family housing, for example, being able to support these programs, you could require it for that, but not for multifamily housing, things like that. You have that, those kinds of flexible options. It is typical to exempt projects that are already in the development pipeline so that their economics are not upset after, like, they're well down the road. And of course, providing alternative means of compliance, whether it's dedication of land, or payment of in lieu fees, or acquiring and preserving other housing that already exists, but doesn't have an affordability restriction on them. All those kinds of things can be part of the program as well. On the linkage fee side, we have similar considerations. Those two can be phased in over time. Again, it's typical to adopt a pretty modest fee relative to what the Nexus study suggests could be supported. Again, you can vary those by geography or by the type of building that you're talking about. And again, of course, it's important to consider where projects are in the development pipeline at the time that the program is adopted so that they can keep moving forward with their economics as already kind of baked in. So examples from other cities that have used the opportunity to be a little flexible. Long Beach, again, I mentioned, they decided earlier this year to adopt an inclusionary program, but they are giving it a phase in over three years, or when a certain number of housing units have been entitled. Berkeley has exempted the first 5,000 square feet of housing, and that way they are encouraging smaller units or smaller projects to be built. And only larger projects are subject to the requirements. Washington DC took three years after they adopted their program to start enforcing it, again, giving time for projects to move forward through the development pipeline. San Jose added additional forms of compliance, in addition to providing the units onsite with the in lieu fees and off-site construction and things of that nature. And then on the commercial linkage fee side, one of the things that we've worked on a couple times is multiple jurisdictions adopting them together. So in Sonoma County, for example, we did a Nexus study for the entire nine city, nine cities plus county, eight cities plus county. So that they could consider that together, so that they wouldn't have competitive disadvantage for one community moving forward with the program and their neighbors not moving forward. So there's a lot of different ways to think about these programs. But with that, I believe it's Hector's turn to talk about the context of other programs.
So thank you, Darren, and good evening, everyone. Again, Hector Ojas, Long Range Planning Manager and PDS. So before we move into tonight's discussion and direction, we wanted to highlight that Vallejo already has a really broad toolkit of state and local laws that support housing production, including affordable housing. Some of these tools are directly focused on affordable housing, while others are more broadly applied to all housing types. But together, they help lower development barriers, open up more land for housing, and provide financial support. So as you could see, several of these tools are listed on the slide. I'm not going to go into each one of them individually, but taken together. Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, Kristi. But taking all together, these laws let developers build more units when affordable housing is included. These laws streamline or speed up the approval process for qualifying projects. They also open up additional land for housing, including faith-based surplus land and underutilized commercial sites. And some of these programs also support adaptive reuse of small lot subdivisions and state funding sources such as tax credits and grants that deeply affordable, that make deeply affordable projects financially viable. So these policies we're discussing tonight, the inclusionary housing ordinance and commercial linkage fee, these would expand our toolkit and give the city an additional way to support and incentivize affordable housing. Next slide. This slide lists some additional tools that we currently use to support housing production, regardless of whether the housing development includes affordable or not. These tools encourage housing near transit by reducing or eliminating parking requirements, streamline environmental review for infill and mixed projects, mixed-use projects, protect existing housing capacity and limit procedural delays, support small-scale for-sale housing through small lot subdivisions. And they also allow ADUs, JADUs, duplexes, and lot splits in single-family neighborhoods. And quite frankly, make it easier to convert older commercial buildings to new homes. Again, want to reiterate, these are all tools that the city already has at its disposal. Two policies we're asking for direction on tonight would add to this existing toolkit and give the city more options to support affordable housing as development occurs. So that wraps up our presentation, and we'd now like to open it up for questions and discussion. After we finish discussion, we'd like to come back to this slide, which was after the slide on the screen. If we could have the slide presentation back. So the first question is whether you would like us as staff to begin drafting an inclusionary housing ordinance. One option would be to proceed with drafting an ordinance with flexibility to explore full, phased, or reduced requirements. Another option would be not to proceed at this time and revisit this idea once market conditions improve. The second question is related to commercial linkage fee. Similarly, one option would be to proceed with the drafting of the ordinance with flexibility to explore fee levels up to $2 per square foot. And the last option there would be to essentially wait until the market improves to revisit this topic. So those are the two main questions that we're asking for direction from you tonight. I'll pass it back to the mayor and facilitate our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. So I'm going to go ahead and invite members of the public who would like to comment on this item, and then we'll get into questions and comments from our commissioners. I do have one right here, which is Jean Drollet, if you can correct my pronunciation of your name. All right. And I believe we have a three-minute timer. If you need a couple more minutes, go ahead and take them. This is an important issue. We got two commissions here, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm not going to take much more time, but I, all right, good evening. I oppose the commercial linkage fee and city approach to inclusive housing, inclusive housing. As someone who has rented for most of my adult life, I'm concerned about policies that require below-market rates units because the cost is ultimately shifted onto other tenants who are barely better off than those receiving the subsidy. While homeowners, including the riches, are exempt. The city envisions funding inclusive housing by taxing commercial development at up to $90 a square foot. For context, Zillow values my house at $163 a square foot. This is an indirect tax on a Vallejo customer. You will discourage new commercial investment, reduce job growth, and make Vallejo less attractive to businesses, the opposite of what we need. If the city is serious about addressing homelessness and housing affordability, it should focus on the real structural causes like local regulations, fees, planning processes, and delays that dramatically increase construction cost. According to the Rand Corporation, a well-respected research firm, building in the Bay Area costs roughly four times as much as in Texas, largely due to these factors. Instead of penalizing commercial development, the city should use its powers to streamline its own processes and work with the state to remove unnecessary barriers that drive these costs higher. Furthermore, while homelessness is a pressing problem, it's not simply caused by the lack of housing. Vallejo contains many properties that have been unoccupied for years. Some owners claim the homestead exemption despite not living there. Others hold properties as long-term speculations. Official vacancy statistics do not fully capture this. These long-term of market units represent housing that could make meaningful difference if the city encourage, rather than discourage, their predictive use. The city must examine why these homes remain empty and make owners feel protected when they rent their property. Additionally, existing homes often sell for under half the cost of new construction. It would make sense for the city or a nonprofit organization to explore purchasing and renting those homes to low-income residents. At roughly $250 per square foot, existing homes are an amazing bargains compared to the $1,200 per square foot wasted on the navigation center. And there are ways to reduce costs further. For example, Menifee, California offers a collection of pre-approved ADU plans so builders can immediately get approval and only pay for inspections. Please drop the proposed commercial linkage fee and inclusive housing mandate that shift costs from one tenant to another. Instead, focus on structural reform, encourage investment, unlock the existing housing stock. Approaches, those approaches are more effective, more equitable, and more likely to help Vallejo thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leah Meisenheimer, followed by Kathleen Dieh.
Good evening. This has been a long time coming. We first started talking about inclusionary housing zoning two years ago. And now we're here. When we're talking about housing, I've been here for 40 years. For the last two decades, we have not built any affordable housing, other than subsidized housing. When I first asked about what was the policy for the city for affordable housing, I was told, well, there isn't any written policy, but we kind of tell people, the developers, 20%. We'd like to have 20%. And now we're seeing it dropped. Even then, we didn't use the 20%. Most of the housing that was built here paid in lieu of fees. Where is that money? Because we haven't built any affordable housing. So if we're talking about putting money aside, and we're going to be collecting money from commercial linkage fees or for affordability, and the people just can't put in affordable units in their development, that money has to be put into a secure funding source that can't be used for everything that, when the city is having a downturn and needs some more money, that they dip into that money and not build affordable housing. The trickle-down theory doesn't work in Vallejo, hasn't worked since I've lived here. We can't keep saying, when the economy gets better, when we have more businesses here, when we have more income coming in, then we'll deal with the people that need help. We need to make sure that families are able to build wealth within their family, that they can buy homes and that they can have that money. We keep having these corporations and developers come and extract money from Vallejo. They've extracted millions and millions of dollars from Vallejo. We see no benefit from it. We need to make sure that we're taking care of the people who want to live in Vallejo, that want to buy a home in Vallejo. When you're looking at right now, that's fine to say, let's buy up the property that's already here for sale. We're talking about anywhere from a half a million dollars to a million dollars and up. What nonprofit can buy a half a million dollar house and then make it into affordability? We've come to the city with many ideas over the years, including community land trusts and working with other nonprofits to try to make sure that we have the ability to get some other outside funding. And we've been met with brick walls here in the city. We've been told the city's not interested. It's time for the city to start thinking about how are we going to house people? How are we going to alleviate some of the problems that the state of California is now facing? Because the biggest problem they have is affordability and housing. We can't just keep saying, well, when other people start getting more money, then that way we can start looking at putting some money away for the, for the rest of the people. The city of Vallejo can't afford to continue to pay half a million dollars and up for housing and then exclude everybody else. We have to come up with a plan, whether it's a plan that's going to raise up from a smaller amount from the beginning. But we can't keep saying, when the economy gets better, the economy gets better. I've been here for 40 years and the economy hasn't gotten better. So we need to start doing something now. We need to start thinking about how are we going to work and operate moving forward, not just looking at what's happening today, but what can we plan on? What's the goal? What are we trying? What are we trying to achieve? What are we saying to the people of Vallejo? We need stability here. We need people to be able to come here and live here, who want to live here and work here, that they are able to afford to be here and that they don't have to commute two hours a day, pay three tolls on bridges just to go to a minimum income job. We need to make sure that the jobs that are here, the people that are living here can, are able to achieve and that they're able to buy a house, that they're able to live in an apartment that's affordable, that we can't keep doing. There was a recent study that I'm sure all of you have seen because I know that we've sent it out. Vallejo was the worst in the Bay Area at 17% of the people who are, are rent burdened. That means they're paying more than a third of their income. Many of them are paying 50% of their income just to have a place to live. So we need to stop burying our heads in the sand and thinking one day it's going to get better because it's not going to get better. What can we do today? What can we do now? What can we put in place so that we're protecting the people of Vallejo and that we're welcoming other people to come here and invest in Vallejo, buy housing that they can afford? And a million dollars is not going to get it. We don't have those type of people that are going to move to Vallejo because we don't have those type of jobs. We need to start working on today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for everyone's, for additional clarification, we've got the timer set up to three minutes, but I've got another one here. I'm going to give everybody up to five. And our next speaker is Kathleen Dihaup, followed by Dan Levin.
Good evening. I spoke, I called in when you guys addressed this in July and appreciated a couple, you've called out my comments, but I realized I must not have said it well. So one of the things I'm impressed is a decade plus ago, when I first came to Vallejo as staff, nobody wanted to talk about housing. And there's efforts to talk about housing. You've done the project with Eden, you're doing the Broadway project, you're doing these things. However, this adding inclusionary housing ordinance, as the EPS analysis has shown, just makes the market rate projects not feasible. So you'll get 12% of nothing getting built. This alone doesn't add housing. It's like trusting that everybody to go into the grocery store is going to buy another bag for somebody else. This alone isn't going to do it. You've got other ways to do it and I want to walk you through some of those. But one question I wanted to ask to staff and I'll put out, you guys can address later is I thought I heard that there might be some tied to state grants, to TOD, that you need to have an inclusionary program to do the things you might want to do in your priority areas, you know, the waterfront others. So if that's the case, I would suggest if you need to move forward with this, start narrow, start with a requirement on rental housing of projects of a scale, maybe 100 units or so, that way you can manage it. When I was on planning commission, we approved an apartment project which on fairgrounds, which used one of these remedies where they promised to put in 12% housing. One, it hasn't, I haven't seen any dirt moving there. The other one, it was never clear to me who on staff was going to make sure those seven or eight units were actually enforced and rented to people with those incomes. You know, the housing authority has ways you do that, but the housing authority is backed up. City of San Francisco, big cities, they have staff that administer these programs. I don't know that you've got the capacity to do that. Wanted to, I don't just have 44 seconds left, I hope.
Now I got you two additional minutes after that.
Okay, thank you. So that's one, but I, so if you want to do it in some narrow way because you need to do it, the other is as you, you have city-owned land. When you look at the waterfront, you look at downtown, you could do that plan and set aside a couple of those city-owned sites to be 100% affordable. One that comes to mind is the parking lot next to grocery outlet downtown. That's a city-owned site. That would be a good place. You bring in a nonprofit developer, they bring in all these other tools and you do it. But you don't, you don't disincentivize the development on the other, other pieces of land. So this alone may look good. It's kind of like voting to release certain files if you were in Congress. You would look like you're acting for affordable housing. This isn't really going to be the thing that gets you there. And I also would like if staff could release, I know you've been at least several years working with EPS and there's been a lot of good analysis that we're seeing in the PowerPoint, but we're only seeing bar charts. There's technical work there which your staff should get and you should release to the public and you should share. Would help you understand what the feasibility. And to say it's just like everywhere else in the Bay Area, it's not quite right. Vallejo hasn't shared in the housing booms others have. We don't want to have any impediments in place when the market picks up. Want to keep going. So, and you also just have to focus your own bandwidth and your staff's bandwidth. You can only do so many things.
Thank you. And thank you Manny for your quick work with the timer. Next speaker is Dan Levin. This is our last in-person speaker. If anyone else wants to address the council, please flag me and grab a form in the back. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I, I wanted to just throw out kind of some general principles and maybe a slightly different way of looking at this. I'm personally against the, the tax on developers in general. And that's one of the points I wanted to make is that I think a lot of these problems we talk about housing in Vallejo and more broadly, as I'm going to get to economic development, I think need to be looked at is more specific solutions instead of something so broad. Vallejo really has different parts of the city, which I think necessitate different solutions. And it would certainly be possible, I don't know the legalities of it, but would seem to be quite possible to implement a tax depending on particular areas we're trying to develop and what kinds of businesses we think we might be able to get there. For example, the casino up on the hill by Vallejo Plaza, maybe that would be an appropriate development activity to impose a tax on to support low-income housing because they're likely to attract a lot of minimum wage jobs. So if, if something could be targeted like that, I think that'd be a very sensible way to look at it. Along the same lines, getting back to the point about different parts of Vallejo, I've been sort of poking into this subject for a number of months now, being a longtime resident of the city, having a business here and definitely seeing a need for economic development and all over the city. There really are distinct neighborhoods and regions which similarly kind of lend themselves, in my opinion, to different solutions. We are probably over-retailed in this city by 50% and don't misunderstand what I mean by that. More business would be great. I don't mean too many businesses by 50%. I mean empty properties. So just getting more people in Vallejo, low income or not, would go a long way toward rejuvenating these, you know, barely running businesses. It would help eliminate blight. I think all housing in Vallejo needs to be looked at in that context is, does it have a secondary effect? And how does that influence the kind of money we're trying to get from developers? If they're willing to come in and get rid of a blighted property, we benefit in two ways, at least. We get rid of the blight and we get the houses. So that again, kind of emphasizes that maybe this could be done in a more targeted way. Lastly, you know, kind of speaking of these different parts of Vallejo, I'm not a NIMBY. I live by the old Farragut School down by the waterfront. I think, and I understand it's a city-owned property. I think that'd be a wonderful place to put in 50, 80 units, maybe even a couple hundred. I'm not sure what that property could support. But this, I'm going to throw this out as kind of an illustration of my point. Where that's located, and I'm, I'm pretty sure my neighborhood would agree with it as well because it's down below the houses with views. So it's actually in my mind, kind of an ideal property to look at in a very targeted way like that. It, I, I drive down 29 to get onto 80 sometimes and there's that new development that went in, I think at the intersection of 29 and Lemon, if I'm not mistaken. Very attractive development that went in there. I think if that went in my neighborhood, people would actually like it. It would get more people in the area. I think it would bolster the businesses on Tennessee Street. Again, thinking of that in terms of economic development. And I really don't think there'd be a lot of NIMBYism. So I think Vallejo could actually pull things like this off if it were very targeted. Sonoma Boulevard is the only other one I'm going to mention. I've spoken before council a lot about downtown redevelopment where my office is, but I'm not going to talk about that today. But just think about Sonoma Boulevard for a moment and I'll close on that. Sonoma Boulevard could probably handle 5,000 units. It honestly could, maybe more than that, depending how packed in they were. It's mostly empty, as you know, if you drive on Sonoma, large properties are empty or dilapidated shopping malls. I'm not sure that a boulevard like that can even sustain three large strip malls in today's economy or the economy we have in the future. Yet we have three and all three of them are like half utilized. So if you just thought about building, you know, six, eight story apartment complexes with retail on the first floor, again, those would seem to me to be suitable developments to actually charge the businesses that come in because they're benefiting from all those tenants above them. So targeted taxes like that might actually work. And I'd really encourage the council, the planning commission to think about not something broad, which I do not think would help the economy in the city, but something more targeted, I think actually could be viable and do really good things for Vallejo. So that's the main point I wanted to make is maybe a scalpel here instead of a sledgehammer, might be able to pull that off. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all for our in-person speakers. Do we have anyone online?
Through the mayor, yes, we do have two speakers online.
All right, let's go ahead and call them.
Crystal Gallegos, please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Crystal from VHJC. So I just want to first start by uplifting the comments from Leat, a 40-year Vallejo resident and a real true local expert here tonight. Her lived experience, the depth of knowledge and commitment to this community shouldn't just be acknowledged, but should be centered. Residents like Leat hold the truth of what's happening on the ground and everything I say tonight is, is really building on that truth because that's who we center our work in. So I want to speak specifically to the presentation done by the gentleman from the Economic Planning Systems Incorporated. You know, this entire framework centers developers, not the community. What we're hearing tonight centers one stakeholder, developers, not the single mother facing rent hikes or seniors on fixed incomes being pushed out of our city, not our BIPOC families who built Vallejo and can't afford to stay. So when the presentation treats developer preferences as basically objective fact and community need as sort of the afterthought, we can predict sort of what the outcome will be, more displacement and stability, deeper racial inequality that's rife in our city. So as of today, November 24, 2025, let's be clear, Vallejo currently has zero, no baseline tenant protections, no inclusionary housing requirements and one of the highest per capita rates of homelessness in the region. If we're to be very honest, in addition to the report that Leat cited with 71% of our folks being cost burdened. And let me be really clear, we support development, but development without displacement. And this is the principle that it seems continues to be ignored. Also, you know, the developer talking points are being presented as feasibility. We've heard things being said tonight, like Vallejo can't absorb inclusionary requirements and developers will leave the market, only modest sort of in-lugue should be considered and any affordability harms feasibility. And these aren't findings, they're developer talking points delivered through a consultant. Meanwhile, our housing element and state, and state law require us to affirmatively further fair housing. I've been saying that every week. AFFH is not a suggestion, it's a legal mandate, let's remember. And we can't claim to meet these obligations while also centering only profit margins and developers over racial equity and housing stability. Also, the comparisons to other cities were intentionally incomplete, we have to talk about that. We're showing selective fragments from Redwood City, San Francisco, Santa Ana, Santa Rosa, Berkeley, San Jose, Sonoma and San Mateo, I think I noted all those. What's left out is that every single one of those cities still has strong inclusionary zoning, stronger tenant protections than Vallejo, larger investments in affordable housing, some have robust anti-displacement programs, some have social housing initiatives and CLTs and enforcement mechanisms that we don't have here. So we're starting from zero. So that example's a bit misleading and inaccurate. And the Long Beach example was also a bit inaccurate. And we heard one tiny procedural detail, the market trigger, as if that's what defines policy. So let's be clear on Long Beach, the inclusionary zoning was paired with other major tenant victories that I've spoke to because they're amazing, including anti-harassment, just cause, deeper affordability, a commitment to social housing like community land trust, which pulls a speculative market off of its core center. And the examples from other cities slide was quite misdirecting. Again, there's much more affordability and the feasibility conclusions collapse really like if we like put it under a microscope. So when I hear a consultant say things like, at this time, inclusionary housing may negatively impact feasibility, what we're hearing, what we actually hear is developers don't like it because there was no displacement analysis, I haven't heard of that, no racial equity analysis, no AFFH analysis, no mapping out who's harmed and who benefits, no analysis of Vallejo-specific segregation programs. And so as a result, this framework is erasing racial equity entirely. So we need AFFH to be taken seriously if the housing element is to be taken seriously. And we see that inclusionary housing is the minimum baseline, not a bold ask that's been suggested tonight. We need things like onsite affordable units, real affordability levels, because we see what these AMIs look like and they're scary. We need community land trusts, which we've long spoken about and policies that confront speculation. So we just want direct staff to return with the real, a real analysis on AFFH in this racial equity impacts, some mapping on displacement and some cost burden data. I can say a lot more, but looks like I'm coming to time.
Thank you. We had one more speaker, correct?
Correct. Paul Tyus Solano Group, please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Hi, dear mayor, council members and planning commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I live in Vallejo and I'm on the executive committee of the Sierra Club in Solano County, which advocates for affordable, walkable communities with jobs close to housing within existing city limits. I have a few criticisms of the pre-meeting written staff report on inclusionary zoning and commercial linkage fees and a proposal for a way forward as we deal with our housing crisis. First, the housing element does not commit the city to explore inclusionary zoning, as the report said. Rather, the housing element commits the city to present inclusionary zoning and renter protection ordinances before the council in September. That didn't happen. We are unsure about the consultant's additional research since last July's meeting. Did they talk to anyone other than developers? Most developers would of course resist ordinances that diminish their profit margins. Even if inclusionary zoning and commercial linkage fees don't pencil out at higher levels, what levels would work in the current environment? Rather than rejecting these measures out of hand, the city could begin them at lower acceptable levels and be ready to increase them if conditions improve. We are almost three years into a seven-year housing element cycle with very little affordable housing planned. Our state RENA or regional housing needs allocation goals are oversubscribed for market rate and shockingly undersubscribed for low and very low affordability. Nobody likes the current situation except those who profit from gentrification. Here's a possible next step in this crisis, as Hector started to outline for us. Rather than starting with inflexible rules, how about coming up with a workable plan of our own tailored to the local conditions? The goal would be to meet RENA requirements in this cycle. An informal conversation could include council, planning commission, planning staff, legal staff, local housing activists, affordable housing developers and regional housing experts. A dozen or so folks all in the same room in dialogue. A workable plan could be hammered out and presented to the wider community for comment through the planning commission. The deadline would be council adoption within three months of the first meeting. What do you think? Let's get moving, Vallejo. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any other online speakers?
That wraps up our speakers at this time, mayor.
All right. Thank you to all of our speakers for your commentary. And what we'll do now is we'll open it up for questions and comments from both boards and I'm going to turn it over to Chair Taylor to solicit feedback from the planning commission and then we'll move over to city council.
All right, great, thank you. And thank you for the presentation and thank you for the public comments. I know it's not always easy for the public to come out to speak to any of the changes that we're trying to move forward for the city of Vallejo. Um, I know it's not always easy for the public to come out to speak to any of the changes that we're trying to move forward for the city of Vallejo. So I'm gonna take this opportunity now to open it up to our fellow commissioners here to, uh, for any questions or any, uh, comments that we have regarding this inclusionary zoning and the commercial. I'm sorry, commercial linkage fee, thank you.
Thanks. Just want to make sure it gets recorded. Okay, I have a couple of thoughts on each. I'm looking towards a kind of a narrow implementation of each of these. Um, so I'll just share my thoughts on what that narrow implementation could be. For inclusionary housing, I think it could be applied to single detached homes. Not the other housing types, not that multi-unit or even small lots. I think it could be applied to green fields, um, when we're developing in new areas of the city that have not been developed before, but not apply to brownfields or areas that we need redevelopment in. And we could use, uh, some developers' help in fixing properties that have been abandoned or don't have a current use. Um, I think there should be several options on the table, um, for alternatives for them to meet this instead of the inclusionary housing zone itself. And some of those should probably be a little bit more attractive to them. Uh, one would be land dedication for large developments where they actually dedicate a portion of their land to accommodate affordable housing that could be developed on that site by another party that would have the incentives um, that a developer has to do a complete, um, affordable housing development. Or in lieu fees, of course, uh, the other option being if they want to develop affordable housing onsite themselves. I think Oakland has such an ordinance, uh, so that the developer could actually do some onsite, um, development of affordable housing that's not of the same kind of the rest of the development. For commercial linkage, I think there could be a narrow implementation of this. I would like to see it applied only to non-local, uh, commercial development. So not local business owners, not someone trying to get off the ground in the Vallejo area. I'd like to see it applied with some sort of look at the median salary of any employees that is going there and what that median salary compares to the median salary needed to afford a home in Vallejo. And anyone that's going below, um, that median salary is hiring at a lower wage. It could apply to them. And again, I think it should apply for green fields, but not brownfields. So where we need commercial development in areas of the city that are blighted, that have abandoned properties that we need to see, um, uh, fixed up, uh, in our urban core, I think we want to make sure that these, these fees and other measures are not, uh, directed at them because we need that development.
Alright, thanks. Thanks for the presentation tonight and for all the minds that are here tonight. So, um, this is hard work and anything worth our time is most times it's hard. So we can't just, um, we have to do something. Just just think about, I have kids that that are, you know, in their thirties, forties and stuff, some of them rent still. And the cost for them to stay here, this is Vallejo. First of all, let me tell you about Vallejo. I am an architect and I made pretty good money when I was, you know, kind of doing the thing. But I chose Vallejo because it's affordable and I could raise the kids and kind of know where they are. And maybe I could meet the teachers and the principals, which I was able to do. But we've got to keep it affordable. Right now, um, the cost to just to get, you know, like a one bedroom or, you know, with our two bedrooms, little tiny ones and everything is, you know, twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars is ridiculous. Right? So we've got to help. You know, now I may not speak as eloquently as, as, as some people, but I do know that the reason I'm sitting on this planning commission is to help our young people, not, not us. I'm talking about the young people. You know, they need some help. And so we've got, we have to make developers be smart and pencil things in, you know, right now, the numbers that I, I saw, yeah, because they're not working. They're not making it work. You gotta make this stuff work, you know, you do. You can't, you can't just, it's not easy. You know what? You can have a hundred million dollars and you still gotta make it work on these big projects, you know? It's not easy. So we've got to give them some incentive. That's our job today is to incentivize the needs of our people here in Vallejo. You know what I'm talking about, folks? I'm talking about being thirty-one years old, you got a kid and a wife, and you gotta have some place to live. And you ain't got three K. You still gotta feed people and all that. That's the word, that's all, all this stuff. I was gonna use the B word, but I didn't. All this stuff comes down to people's lives and giving them a place to live in this town. You know, Vallejo's a nice place, you know, it gets a lot of bad rap and all that. But this is a nice place. We just have to make it a little nicer for people and make it affordable, right? And so we cannot not have fees. We cannot not make people build affordable housing. It's irresponsible. You know, it's irresponsible. We've got to do something and it's hard. But it's not gonna not be hard, you know, in two years, three years, whatever the market does, yada, yada, yada. It's still gonna be hard. So let's make, let's do some things. We're gonna do inclusionary, then, you know, we'll do, you know, in lieu of them. Right? But we need to do something. That's my, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Right there with, boy, this thing hasn't been. Um, today I looked at some other, uh, cities for their inclusionary housing program. I looked specifically at Richmond because Richmond is, even though they're in a different county, we know that only Benicia has an inclusionary housing ordinance that's in their municipal code. But throughout their, it's only eight pages, their inclusionary housing program. It gives their planning commission many weapons to, to challenge developers. I don't know if you've looked at them, staff. I'm sure you have. So, um, I would like to follow some of the challenges that they give, uh, developers. I can't tell you, and I think my cohorts up here, how many developments have come before our commission? And we have challenged the developers back to add inclusionary housing, low, lower cost housing for people who are in a specific income bracket. And we get constant pushback. So I'm ready to push back. I know it's a risk. But if we don't take that step, we're never going to address the housing issue in Vallejo. And while a lot of people are worried about the next generation, and yes, I am, I am also worried about seniors. I'm worried about veterans. I'm worried about single parent households that have kids. They just, you know, what, are they gonna end up living in the desert? Because that's the only place that, that they can afford to live. And then where are they gonna work? So I am, I am challenging our staff to come up with some creative um, solutions in looking at what other, uh, Bay Area cities have done. I really like the Richmond model. And also I looked up today, uh, ABAG government. They have a list of different cities in the Bay Area. Berkeley, Concord, Fremont, Richmond, San Francisco, San Jose, San Mateo, Santa Rosa, and Sunnyvale, and all of the, um, adjustments that they are making based on their experience so far with their inclusionary housing ordinances and programs. So they are refining their process. We can learn from them. Um, in, in reference to the in lieu commercial, um, fees, I also, I mean, have we been collecting these fees? No, okay. So, you know, that would be, have to be a program that would be set up on the city side and have those funds put in a specific account, not in the general fund. So that our dollars can go even further to additional housing. So that's my input for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And I, you know, I think, um, I feel like I say the same thing every single meeting. And I had somebody come up to me and say, you say the same thing all the time. It's because we doing the same thing all the time. You know, we were constantly kind of missing the mark and I keep saying that over and over again. And, you know, Liat is on to something. Anybody who's been here for forty years and has heard the same song and dance is gonna get tired of dancing with you. Because you're not going anywhere. You're dancing at the club or at the night bar, but no one takes you home to date you and to court you and to get married and to what? Buy a home. That's the only way I can break it down to just be a hundred with you right now. Right now, you know, it's like we keep talking about, is Cristal still on the line? That woman has been talking about community land trust for about five years. I met with her six years, it's about six years ago, maybe, maybe about five, six years ago at Good Day Cafe. And we still talking about what Richmond doing and we're not even, I don't even think we scratching the surface. Hector, thank God, I came from Richmond. So, you know, I'm, I'm leaning on you. Cause you know the play. You know the playbook, right? So we do have to make a decision. Unfortunately, we're gonna gain some likes and not likes and a developer's gonna be one of them. But again, I have to say, while I know that we need affordable housing, we probably should stop saying affordable and say social. You know, we need more than just low income. We also need workforce housing because I, I think school teachers make still under fifty thousand. And the last time I checked, that's teetering on poverty. So if the future, the people who are teaching the future can't afford to buy, then I don't think we're in any position to say, let's wait. Because at the, the last time I checked, our schools are closing. And it ain't because of the pandemic. People are moving. People with salaries at seventy-five K and above are moving. Again, in twenty twenty-two, thirty-four percent of the people that lived here were on a social service. Were collecting some social, they needed some sort of social service to, to maintain their, their lifestyle. And I'm not talking about buying a Bentley or driving a, a luxury car. I'm talking about putting gas in the car that they hope will start up the next day. I'm talking about the food stamps, the, you know, IHSS workers, the, the list goes on. So if we continue to say that now isn't the time, well, we're never going to get to where we need to be. Um, we have to pull the trigger at some point and the time is now. The inclusionary housing policy, um, does include workforce housing. It also includes reasonably priced, subsidized, section eight, all of the above. But let's not, I don't want to push for homeownership until we can get folks who rent a home first. Cause if I'm on SNAP, I'm, I don't want to buy, pay a mortgage. Cause with mortgage come all the other liabilities that a renter is not aware of. Also, we might want to start looking at contacting these, um, developers who work only in, you know, a hundred percent affordable because they do provide the wraparound services that we so desperately need, like Mercy Housing and Mid Penn Housing. And no, they're gonna, they're not gonna be, want to be, they're not going to be attracted to Vallejo initially. But if you collect a city's salary, it is your job to make Vallejo attractive. It is your job to make this city sexy, attractive, formidable. That is your job. When I go to the city of San Francisco, I have to beg and plead for you to work there. I have to make it the best employer in the world. And it's not, but I have to make it that. I have to convince you that getting in your car for two hours is worth it. And we know it's not. We know it's not. Cause we're doing the commute now. We got people on council doing this, the commute. So now is the time to look at linkage fees. It is now. And two dollars a square foot ain't hurting nobody. It's, it's not hurting nobody. We're not talking about, you know, attaching these fees to small business owners. That's not the, that's, that's not the play here. We're talking about businesses who can afford it. We're talking about people who have stockholders and shares. And two dollars a square foot ain't hurting nobody. Or else they wouldn't be building. And Vallejo is very attractive, contrary to popular belief. It is very attractive with prostitution and all, because we are still very affordable. We are. That's why I moved here. We had a person say before on the dais, everybody move here because it's affordable. Duh. Where else we gonna move? We have to at some point. That's why, that's why, didn't you tell me that's why you moved here? Is that what you said? Exactly. That's, we didn't choose to live here because we had an abundance of resources. We knew that coming in. But now that we're here, we do have to do something about it. Because now we're staring at the barrel of forty-four percent people who are collecting a social service and we don't really have a lot of social services to provide. So I am in favor, I know we're not voting or nothing at this time, but I am in favor of the linkage fee for sure. And two dollars mirroring Richmond is not going to, I don't think it will, uh, it will cause us to falter. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation today. Um, I'll try to make my comments brief. I do feel that the inclusionary housing, uh, fee is very important. Something has to be done in Vallejo, right? A lot of people talked about moving here. Well, I pretty much grew up in Vallejo. So for everybody who said, you know, I moved here, I dealt with this. I have a lot of deep ties to this community, right? The reason I joined the planning commission is because I haven't been active in helping the city, right? The way that I should have been through the years. Did a lot of things, have been out and about. This Vallejo is a very beautiful city, right? Vallejo has a lot of wonderful people, okay? Um, from my perspective, I do kind of agree with what my fellow commissioner Bind said. Um, I think we need to look at it maybe with a scalpel, right? Look at the way the fees are developed, but I think that there are a lot of options that can be developed. Um, and I hope that the city staff takes a really good look at the different options that we have. I do feel that there needs to be fees applied because we definitely need affordable housing for all the residents of Vallejo. And I will leave it at that.
Alright, thank you everyone. Uh, so as I think about this presentation and public comments, I strongly support inclusionary zoning and commercial linkage. I strongly support inclusionary zoning and commercial linkage. And my reason for thinking about this is that I believe this is a shared effort of everyone in the city of Vallejo to imply or state how a policy would affect one's specific demographics, for example, a developer, other property margins. Well, when we flip that on the other end, we have another group that no one's advocating for significantly where they could be displaced. And that's, that's unfortunate. And the reason why I say it's unfortunate is because we have CEQA laws where we think about displacement of animals, displacement of reserved land. Now, I'm not to say that anyone is any more important than the other, but I think being considerate of other individuals who could be displaced in this process. Now, we cannot uh figure a way to solve every problem, but if we could put something in place that can help some individuals who need to, who needs advocacy to look out for their specific interests because they may not have the voice or the time or the capacity to say, hey, we're part of this community as well. Include us. We have been very successful of doing that for wildlife who don't have a voice. We should extend that same grace to our fellow residents. This is, is important. Yes, there could be an impact, it could come at a cost, but it should be a shared cost that everyone should take moving forward and thinking about what's in the best interest for all our community residents. Um, a lot of us here do understand the cost of doing business. We do understand economy of scale. We do understand economic cycles as well that goes up and down. If we wanna wait till the economy is right, then we can actually miss an opportunity if we don't have this in place. Now, however, you know, I do think, you know, the change enforcement uh in response to the economic condition to tailor it where we can still move in the right direction uh overall for our city. In the same, as well as still keeping the community residents in mind, who, who does need this? Now, I can see the economic impact in the entire Bay Area just over the years to just watching it, just feeling it myself. But I can say this, that I actually feel have feelings for the fact that I could see someone else being displaced and understanding the history of that in the Bay Area. We have several communities, several different socioeconomic groups have been displaced. And in those policies, there was not something in place at the time to protect them. So those are missed opportunities that we should be learning from. And so I think we should factor that in. And it could come at a cost. I believe that's the cost of, of doing business when we're looking out for others as opposed to thinking about what's in the best interest of one specific group who has the resources, who does, who's not committed to the city of Vallejo and who can figure out somewhere else they wanna develop. But then when I think about this, city of Vallejo is one of the most affordable coastal cities that we have. We have rolling hills, so we have a topography that makes us very attractive. I think in that, considering those unique abilities, we can leverage that moving forward. And considering all the other factors that actually affect the cost, not just policy itself. It had been mentioned in land costs, construction costs. These are other areas that does impact the cost as well that probably would be adjusted based on economic or the market conditions. So considering that our planning staff do have the tools to support this law moving forward, I believe, I strong, again, I strongly believe that we should move forward with inclusionary zoning ordinance and the commercial linkage. Let me turn this over.
All right, thank you all. Thank you all so much. Um, I wanna appreciate all the comments from the entire planning commission and note that I did, I'm hearing a, a real consensus. Uh, I think we had pretty much a unanimous consensus with acknowledgement of some of the challenges and the need for a tailored approach for our city. So I appreciate that. And with that, I'm gonna open it up to the city council for questions and comments. And then we will give direction on the items that staff had, uh, staff had recommended. With an eye on the clock, it's about ten to eight. I do wanna make sure we have the robust discussion that we need to have on this item. Uh, but it'll just, you know, be mindful of, of that timing. And with that, I will see if anybody wants to start, if we wanna go down the line. I'm seeing council member Palmares and then council member Gordon.
All right, councilman.
All right, go ahead, council member Gordon. And make sure you're in your mic.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I had to write down, first of all, I wanna thank um the presenter, uh, the presenter for um presenting to us. Um, it, it's just something for us to work on. And I really celebrate the commission. You all came here with passion and I appreciate that. I wanna thank the staff because you heard our concerns and um your thinking ideas of helping Vallejo grow. Um, and I appreciate that. In saying that, I don't want the people who helped sustain Vallejo be pushed out either. We have to think about that. Um, so I'm gonna read this because, you know, I'm very passionate, so I don't wanna get off track. As the gentleman was reading um his presentation, I was writing this down. So I said, who has the highest eviction rate in California from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five? You will never believe it. Vallejo is still in the, is the only city with the twenty point with fixed income to working income. While the highest overall eviction rate in twenty twenty-five to twenty, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, believe it or not, it is Salano County had the highest regional rate in the Bay Area. Y'all have Google, look it up. It is the highest above Alameda County saw significant increase when they created that program that you just mentioned. I wonder if that's the cause. San Berni, uh, San Bernardino County reported to be second, to be third to its alliance noting that they are now merging to be the highest eviction rate. But the point to continue the highest rate is areas like San Francisco and Alameda, Santa Rosa, with the non-payment rent being a primary reason cited. Why? The rates are increasing from renting to even purchasing. In many cases, the primary reasons for eviction filing is people are not able to afford the rent, even working up to houses. The cost is still financial stress. So I said, okay, let's see if this is gonna be beneficial. You know, I like to do my homework a little bit. And I wrote, I looked up and I said, my question was, how would inclusionary housing linkage fees cost eviction rate from, in California from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight? Inclusion rate is, inclusion housing linkage fees are generally urged to potentially increase eviction rates. And directly by contributing to the overall reduction of supply of new housing and increasing market rate rents, which puts pressure on the existing low-income tenants. Even the income, get this, at sixty thousand dollars a year. There is however, a lack of direct studies that significantly link these fees to all eviction rates. The proposal casual links for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight period rates do the following economic argues. Increased eviction rates. Reduced overall housing supplies. Increased market rate cost. Encouraging high-end development. Target assistance, mixed evidence, uh, um, evidence, which means that you could have mixed income. Tenant protection. See, we can have these things in place, but we do not have anything to protect those who have sustained Vallejo to make it attractive to those who wanna come here. In summary, the link is not direct for all cases of eviction. However, unfortunately, it is proven to be one of the main causes. Economic argues, arguments that these fees can benefit, but it does have an underlying condition. High housing costs and low supplies contribute to eviction. The actual person depends on our leaders to help govern, work with the city and find ways so that people do not feel that their lives are at a potential where they have to move from the very place they grew up. I spoke to a young man the other day and I said, where are you gonna go when you, when you graduate from college? You're gonna come back to Vallejo and do a lot of things? And this is what he said. I want to come back, but I can't afford to live here. I moved out of my mom and dad's house like my dad said he did. But his dad was paying two hundred dollars to six hundred dollars for his apartment. Likewise, myself in Sacramento. Now these kids are, just add a couple zeros to that now. They cannot even afford to live where they grew up. So he's now going to Sacramento right now. So he was happy to be home and he worked in San Francisco. Now he has to go to Sacramento just to afford. And that is a problem. And it's not just fixed income people. It's folks who make those double digits. And I told someone something I saw the other day and I hope you guys don't go looking for him, but I, I was uh at Target waiting for my um items because I don't trust myself to go in the store anymore. Um, and I'm not trying to be emotional, but I saw this man. He looked like he was in a three-piece suit, took off his jacket, folded up nicely. And he replaced a jacket in the trunk for a pillow and a blanket. Something is wrong with that people. And although I wanna see Vallejo growing, but these developers know because when I drive, I go see my family in Southern Cal, I swear when I come back, it's another set of housing somewhere. Of course, not in my district, Sakes, I would like to see something like that. But I swear, so it must be something attractive to hear. Because dang, where'd you come from? A whole housing? So we are definitely growing, but we cannot let these developers take advantage of us. It's not fair. You would not want anybody to take advantage of you. So if these developers wanna come in, let them come in, right? Pay for that door. Cause trust me, you're going to look for other smaller communities and do the same thing and then turn around, because you know what people are doing? They're buying properties and they're waiting. They'll wait ten years, they'll get, use the tax write-off. And as soon as we continue to let people take advantage of us, they're gonna sell that property for millions of dollars. They're telling people right now, if you got a house right now, don't you sell it. I don't care what, you hold on to that bad boy like it's nobody's business. If you got a Airbnb in, let Cookie live in it for a little bit, do whatever you gotta do. Don't sell it. Because we are growing, I know we are. We're gonna be a college, a college town. We are growing, but let's do it with dignity and pride. That's all I ask. Thank you for letting me speak.
Councilmember Paul Myers?
Thank you, mayor. So first off, I'd like to um thank staff for working on this uh so diligently and thank EPS for the presentation. I'd like to thank the community for coming here with the public comments and emails. I really appreciate it. And also the planning commission for the very thoughtful comments uh yet again. Um, I just wanna be very clear about my position. I'm hundred percent pro-housing and I'm a hundred percent pro-tenant protections. Uh, I am a tenant, a renter. Uh, uh, some of you have had the displeasure of visiting me in my former crappy apartment. Um, I don't longer live there, but you know how bad it was. Uh, so uh this issue is not lost on me. So let me just be clear about my recommendations and direction. So with the commercial linkage fee, I do support it. Um, at least to come back to us, I don't really have a specific rate in mind and I'll touch on that a little bit later. Um, but when it comes to inclusionary uh, uh, and inclusionary ordinance, uh, I wanna approach this with an abundance of caution here. Um, so if I just had to eyeball it, first off, I, I really am not sure we, we have it on the books just to have it, right? I don't wanna have to revisit this issue time and time again. So at least explore a marginal rates. Um, I've heard some comments uh from the audience. Uh, somebody about a market trigger and I like to be a little bit more precise as far as, well, if there's a specific geographic area where there's a cluster of above-market uh type kind of developments, I think that will be also an additional trigger uh for inclusionary uh ordinance. Um, just because I, from what I've read and from the analysis that I've seen, it's not for every situation. And so that's just kind of my, my eyeball perspective on where and when that, that could be applicable. But with that said, I, I don't think this is a, this isn't a binary decision. And I think we have to be very thoughtful about how we approach this and not just say, well, Richmond did it this way uh or this city did it this way. I mean, I, I think it's important for us to recognize that, one, we don't want to accidentally initiate a chilling effect where uh no developer wants to do anything here, right? That's, 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 that's a huge issue for me. Um, so part of what I'm trying to say right now is I would also highly recommend uh that we have uh a robust conversation that hasn't happened already uh with the Turner Center at UC Berkeley. They've done lots of analyses on inclusionary zoning and I believe they have also done on commercial linkage fees. And uh these studies are recent. And so they could, with more than just us eyeballing this and looking at certain cities, they could provide us some uh, a little bit more due diligence as far as what are the rates that work? What are the circumstances in which they work? And I think by having that conversation with them, we could get to a, a, a much more refined ordinance. And they've also done some analyses as far as modeling. At which point do we get a chilling effect? And, and, and just for those who aren't sure, uh, you know, that term, just what, what is the point where we are, we are communicating to developers, no, you can't develop here. And that's the last thing I want. So I think there's room for discussion on this and I wanna make this work, but we have to be very precise and analytical about this and very evidence-based. I, I could just say, yeah, five percent or whatever, right? But how would I know? You know, smart people who have more letters after the last name than me ha, have, have worked on this. So let's, let's uh lean on them. Um, and lastly, I've also heard a, a few comments about just the other tools that are at our disposal uh to encourage more housing. And I don't think we should lose that uh, that narrative, that conversation. And what I like to pursue, and I'll probably bring this up at a city council meeting is, aside from the housing element, which I feel like gets to ninety percent of, or even ninety-five percent of what we should be doing to encourage all kinds of housing for our workforce. But I think also we should invest into a housing strategy. Right? And that's a little bit different. And, and by strategy, I don't mean like, oh, here's a list of things and tools we have, but like a real, an action plan as far as how are we going to proactively get the housing that we want? Instead of just saying, well, we've checked off the block as far as what the state wants us to do and we're doing this and that. But what are we actually doing to say, hey, this brownfield here, what are? Hey, this brownfield here, what are, how are we going to do some infill development there? How are we going to get mixed use here? You know, what, what permit fees do we need to raise or lower, whatever it is, right? I think we need to get to. That last five percent and figure out what we actually need to be doing to really invest in our city in terms of housing. And also economic development. So those are the recommendations I have. I, I hope the planning commission and city council. Considers them. Thanks.
Turn it over to Councilmember Matulik.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the presenters and thank you to the planning commission. For chiming in on their very thoughtful ideas and. And many, many of the topics they talked about. Having been on the planning commission for over seven and a half years and now on council for close to two and a half years now. This is a, obviously, I, I think these presentations and the, and the conversations tonight speak to the complexity. Of what this whole issue and this whole. Vallejo is. I think for those of us that have lived in Vallejo for such a long time, we realize. We picked Vallejo. One of the reasons was because it was one of the most affordable places to live in the Bay Area. If a lot of us did the homework. Of, of where to, where to plant our, plant our family to, to live and grow up. And I think Vallejo was. Has come about to be that, that deciding factor of, because of the affordability. I think from, when we talk about inclusionary zoning and the commercial linkage fees. I think, I think one of the things that, that I think we've, we're identifying is it's not a one-size-fits-all. Concept here. I think what happens, what development happens in District One is different from what happens in District Two. District Three throughout the, all the districts. And I think just as developers. Go through their penciling of figuring out what, what's, what number works. I think we as a, we as a city and, and. This puts the burden on potentially the staff to figure out what is, what is the. Penciling number that works in, in the particular areas of Vallejo and in particular districts. And it's going to be different. In, in each of these, in each of these areas. So I think one of the, one of the. Concerns that I have is we've, we're. One voice that I think we're missing out on is our economic development director. I think if we had one in place. That, that could potentially help us guide with a lot of the concepts and the ideas of where we may go because this ties to. The planning department and the zoning of what we do and it's in the particular areas, which speaks to each of the particular districts. So I, I think once we have these conversations, I think. Councilmember Paul Myers and a lot of the other speakers, especially those from the planning commission spoke to the, the one-size. The one-size-doesn't-fit-all to where we need to take a look at what may work in different areas. Identify what works in particular areas, what numbers may work. So. I, I think we need to do more of our homework and know Vallejo even more than what we're, than what's being presented right now and. And pencil it out for each of the districts to see what is the actual number. And I don't think we've gone. I don't think we've done our due diligence enough to, to be able to figure that out. And, and once again. I, I'm concerned to say that we're, we're putting more of the burden on the staff to be able to figure it out, but someone's got to figure it out. And whether that's staff, whether they need to bring in consultants or whatever the expertise is, we need to, we. Need to determine what that number is to where the inclusionary zoning with the commercial linkage fees, where that will work. In, in the particular areas to where we have, we have a robust and an overall, I guess. For a better lack of terms, a formula that may work throughout the city. And so I, I'm hoping that we can get to that level. We're obviously not there yet. The fact we were. The fact where there's a lot of different thoughts and, and because I think what we're hearing is what, what, what isn't working at the moment. I think we need to identify what, what is actually going to work and until we run the numbers to figure out what works and what districts. We're all going to be chasing our own tails to a certain extent, but we need to have that expertise and, and that, those formulas figured out. For us to be able to have a, a more comprehensive conversation moving forward. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Matthias.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm gonna perhaps say. Or put together a hotchpotch of things this evening. And I hope a lot of this stuff makes sense. So I actually went back. I reviewed the housing element. I reviewed the general plan. And the reality is city staff and the community has already been spending a lot of time talking about this. They did it in twenty fifteen as Kathleen shared earlier. They put a proposal in front of the city council in twenty sixteen. They came back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and put another proposal. And now here we are again going through the same process. So we've been doing a lot of talking. Trying to figure this out and every single time it gets put in front of the council. It doesn't move forward. These things need to move forward. The inclusionary housing ordinance and the linkage fee. The counterargument to the presentation would be the following. If that was. If this was actually stopping development, we haven't had a policy. So why, why hasn't, why haven't we had booming development across Vallejo? That's the real question because we haven't had a policy. We haven't had any fees and yet here we are. I, I would just have you guys think about that for a second. If this was stopping developers. We haven't had anything in place. Why don't you have rampant development? Just happening across our city? So. We got to move this forward and we got to stop talking about it. I want to see a proposal from staff. I want you guys to look at the Pasadena ordinance that was passed twenty-four years ago. And that city's doing fairly fine. They have a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Residents, fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand more than we do. But I think that gets me to point number two. I think we have to stop trying to solve multiple problems every time we have one conversation. So today we're talking about housing, right? We can't solve the economic development problem just with this one document. It helps, but we can't solve that. We can't solve the fact that we also have an issue with our school district that needs to be addressed. The moment you address the school district, the moment you attract employers to the city. The moment you attract higher-income earners to the city is the moment you start growing the economy. So there's several things that need to be. Sort of moving in the right direction. This document is not going to address all those things. It's not. So. Developers can make money provided all those other things are also clicking at the same time. They're not just looking at, well, is it just the construction costs? Is it just this? Is it? No, they're also looking at. Is there a school district? Are there really good schools in Vallejo? Are there major employers in Vallejo? Are the streets repaved? Is there a sense of community? If those things are not in place, then they can't make the profit they actually want to make. That's just business one-on-one. So please look at Pasadena. As it relates to our own general plan and our own zoning code. Density bonuses. And this goes back to just an earlier point I made. So. I've been talking about Sonoma Boulevard. I've been talking about Springs Road. I've been talking about Tennessee Street. All the way up to, you know, American Canyon. There are specific areas that I've been calling out in the ten months I've been in office. So to. Points that have been made by members of the public and council members and commissioners today. You can't just have a conversation around like the housing element. To Charles's point, what's our strategy to spur redevelopment of Sonoma Boulevard? What's our strategy to spur redevelopment of Tennessee Street? Springs Road. How are we using all these different tools? To the Turner Center that you just referenced, there is. They released a report in March calling for the use of the California Property Tax Welfare Exemption. To spur affordable housing developments. So what's our overall strategy to make sure all these different tools are overlaying? So that when a developer does come here, we say, hey. Here's the package so that you can still pencil out the math, so the math maths. And. We've done that heavy, heavy lifting of thinking through all of these pieces for you. Because otherwise they have to figure that stuff out. And sometimes those folks don't got time for that. So how are we positioning ourselves as a pro-business city? Doing some of that heavy lifting. If we don't have the capacity on staff because you guys got a lot of stuff going on. Then, I mean, this council, I'm sure stands ready to support. You know, some cohesive strategy that we can present to folks when they're coming to do business here. And. Then lastly, going back to. Implementation. I'm all for having additional sessions on sausage making. Is it five percent or ten or two or this or that? But I don't want to waste another two or three years talking about this. Ten years and we're still talking about the same thing. Move it forward as soon as possible. Give us reference points to some of these cities. I don't necessarily agree with some of the comparisons. In the presentation, although I appreciate the work. And. Let's move on to talk about economic development. So please move this forward as soon as possible. And. I hope I don't have to see this again a year from now. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you everyone for the work you've done. And. For me, the bottom line is. The inclusionary zoning is the requirement. The commercial linkage fees are the money and the housing strategy is a system that ties it all together. And. Two. Points made. You know, in this presentation, we list a whole host of tools that we can use. I'm not quite sure honestly how we've used them. I tried to research really quickly over the last five years, how have we used these with developers coming in? I was with a developer just this week and I've been talking to this developer. On and off since I ran for office and it pains me every time I think about this developer putting up housing in. My district and I am not getting any kind of fees from them. Because we don't have anything. And you can't say, oh, we tell people about it because it does not enforce. What we are needing and what we are looking for and what we deserve. So I like Councilmember Matthias is. I don't want to come back and have a study session about this topic, frankly. I simply want to see it get done. I simply want to see the staff. Have the right tools to develop this, not in a year, but in the next. At least three to four months. Does that mean that we need to hire a consultant to come in and help? To me, this is worth spending additional dollars to bring in expertise to work alongside the team. To get it done. And not only when it comes back. I'd like to see the renter protections as well. I worked in a city. And there are cities all around us that have renter protections. It's ridiculous that we, in a city where one in every three resident. Is requiring some type of subsidy to live in our city. To, and one in every five residents in our county is receiving subsidy. And we don't think that there should be renter protections. Shame on all of us. So we need to bring all of that back together. So that we can then begin to determine how we're going forward. And it is true, we have limited staff power. We're no different than any other municipality. So how are we going to spend our dollars to make sure that we're leveraging? Expertise outside of our, outside of our staff to get the work done. Because you can't do it all by yourself. I understand that. So I'm very supportive of doing this work. I know for a fact that none of this work. We need a housing trust fund. I strongly believe in having a housing trust fund. I know what a housing trust fund can do and build. San Francisco does it. Whether you like it or not, it happens. And the bottom line is. We need a plan that is specific to Vallejo. We need to understand every inch of our city. We need to understand. What property our city owns so that we can leverage that property. And we can give that property as part of our give to building affordable housing. We have to do our part. We have property and we're just sitting on our property. We don't even know what it's doing. We're protecting it. We're wasting money on it. And these are the kinds of things that we can use to leverage. And help projects pencil out for affordable housing. At the federal level and at the state level, we have, we don't have the dollar, dollars that we once had. So we are, we as a city, what, what property do we have that we can leverage? In these deals. I know we have property that we can leverage in these deals. And so. You know, community land trust. How can we use that tool as well to leverage these? Types of projects. All of this, all of these tools that we're talking about are very important. And it is true that if we have a. Cheat sheet, if you will, a sheet ready to tell developers what's available, but I can tell you. Many, our affordable housing developers, Midpin, Jon Stewart. They don't need our cheat sheet. They already know all of this. But the point is, are we ready? And are we ready to sit at the table? Do we have a set of, a set of attorneys? When I sit and I'm doing development, there are fifty million attorneys. I'm sorry. And we have to hire the right attorneys to sit at the table and negotiate hard with them. Otherwise, they will take everything that you have. It's just the fact of the matter because this is all about business. So we also have to be smart about how we're sitting with these affordable developers and bringing people in. We have a beautiful city. And we're here, this council is here to support you in getting this work done. So it's bring the strategy, let's talk about it and say, here's our recommendations and let's go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. So I'm, I'm in concurrence with the, the. Consensus up here and I think the way that I've been thinking about this. For many, many years is that we're seeing the affordable crisis. We've been seeing the affordability crisis hit. Every city, you know, starting with San Francisco, hitting every city and, and we know that our, our folks here are already feeling it. But the wave that has crashed over much of the East Bay and our neighbors. For whatever reason, delayed by COVID or things like that. It's still, there's still a lot of crash, a wave that's going to crash over us when it comes to affordability and we. We really do have two choices. We can either let it crash over us and lose a lot of people. And see a lot of harm or we can ride the wave by putting things in place like this. So that when that inevitably, that, that development does come, when that demand does come and when the prices start going up. We've got these measures already in place to help protect our people who are already. Suffering, don't get me wrong. They're already feeling the affordability crisis, but there's still. When you compare Vallejo to the East Bay and to those north of us, I think there's still, we're, we're still very, very. Attractive in terms of our location, in terms of, of how many different places you can reach as in the workforce from here. There's still, I think we still have an affordability crisis very much in our, in our midst and. To the point I was going to make, it actually builds on what Councilmember Matthias was saying. I, I very much. Am cognizant of the risk of putting something like this in place and then having. No housing. I'd rather have market rate housing than, than no housing because we just need all housing of all types, but I don't think that this is the type of thing that is a binding constraint. To a developer being able to build. I think this, as we see with all of our neighboring cities that have it in place, I think you can very, very, very much have development in the Bay Area with inclusionary zoning. The commercial linkage fee, you know, separately, I would probably prioritize the inclusionary zoning over that, but, but that, that as well. For me, I think there's a separate conversation that needs to be had about why haven't we been seeing the progress that we've seen elsewhere? And I think it has to do with needing to streamline our processes and think about, you know, how we're. and think about, you know, how we're handling and pushing developers through the process. And to that end, I really want to appreciate and commend the planning team. As you all have staffed up over the past few years, I've said a few times up on the dais that I think we're getting ready to really hit the gas. And I think if we can put something like this in place to protect our most vulnerable while we're also going to the private sector and saying, we are open for business, play by these rules to protect us and we will work with you and we will get your project through as quickly as possible. If we need to go to the state for help, well, you know, we might need the state to, we might need to advocate for some legislation at the state level to get us through those processes. But I think we can offset the disincentive, any disincentive for a developer by improving our processes and finding other ways to get, you know, get them here and get them building. And we've got to have that conversation about the suite of policies that is going to get us there. I'm fully supportive of Community Land Trusts, of the tenant protections. I mean, we have to have that holistic conversation. Obviously, the economic development conversation, how we get folks to build here. I really appreciated what Commissioner Blind said about the green fill versus infill. That's exactly what I was thinking during the presentation was, you know, I think there's a big difference between trying to revitalize and redevelop existing areas versus sprawling out. And we do need to do both. I mean, we kind of need to do all of the above in Vallejo. But I think looking at those differently might be worthwhile, looking at Mare Island and how that fits into all of this, because that's kind of, I don't even know that there's a term for that. It's kind of gray field, but like brown and all the colors. So what does that look like, looking at, you know, different densities? I think we need to tailor that, obviously, to Vallejo. But yeah, I'm in agreement with everybody else. I think putting this in place is needed, it's overdue. Let's get it done and then let's have that conversation about how to make sure that we are incentivizing construction of housing in our city so that we can meet the needs and we don't have this wave crash over us and we ended up displacing even more people. And we all know the implications of that from a racial justice perspective and an economic justice perspective. So I think, you know, looking down the line, I think we've got a pretty good consensus. I don't know if we need to vote on anything specific. It sounds like we want to move forward with both. Everybody is kind of, I mean, both Planning Commission and Council, there's been a fairly unanimous concurrence to both. Go ahead, Councilmember Gordon, briefly.
I just want to say, for me, I just, I appreciate my colleagues. I'm so glad that we're all here. Mine's I want to give you the concern of what we need to think about as we want to move forward, right? What I would like to do is to have, even for me, I can't speak for no one else, but more of an intense conversation about how can we blend these things together? And not, as I said, my concern, push out people, but have that mixed income conversation, whether it be business and retail. But I think we cannot do any of those things for the people who have been speaking for months and years. And until we, I think we have a comfortable feeling if we have rent protection. We would know that, okay, we're building, but guess what? It's not going to hurt us, people, we're good. You know, especially with our eviction rate being so the highest of California. I think I would be so more content into seeing, because Vallejo, District Six is brown. I'm serious. So we definitely need all of those beautiful projects, you know, development, infrastructure. We need that, especially what I'm looking at District Six being a college town with Cal Poly coming to us. But again, I cannot say it again, I do not want to push the people like you who's been here for 40 years. Me, 26 years, I go by Christopher's age. So I've worked hard to build up my area. I don't want to be pushed out of my area. And so I don't think you get a big pushback if you let the people know they're going to be safe. Thank you. I ain't going to get on a boat without no lifeguard. You know, I got no, I don't have no vest on, I'm not getting on that boat. Thank you. I hope that, I know I sound kind of silly, but I'm trying my best not to be emotional, to be honest with you. That's, I'm just trying to stay focused. So thank you.
So I saw, yes.
Back to your question about whether or not we would need a vote on moving forward. I think if the council is satisfied with staff bringing back what I would call an option type of ordinance so that you can have discussions about what level, what, you know, what does it apply to? How do we? And maybe that first conversation has some structure to it in terms of an ordinance, but has, I don't want to use the word necessarily blanks, but some options for you to then give direction on that. I don't know that we need that direction this evening, because I'm not sure you're coalesced on those particulars yet.
And I believe that was what was on the slide, was for staff coming back with an ordinance that had, you know, different, a few different options.
Right, so I guess the question I think staff would have, or the question that I have is, how would the council and commission like that to occur? If we go to actually adopt an inclusionary ordinance or a linkage fee ordinance or both, the process, because those are embedded into the zoning ordinance essentially, would be to go to the Planning Commission and then bring that forward to the council. But I think there's policy questions that need answering first. So it's legislative, it's not a problem. Would you like us to come back, discuss those policies, get the basic framework, and then go through the process is the question that I would have for the immediate next step.
I think that the consensus among the city council is that we don't want to get stuck in the never-ending cycle of having more and more conversations. So whatever's going to get it done the quickest is probably, I'm kind of looking down the line, that I don't think we want to add unnecessary steps. So if the ordinance needs to go before Planning Commission first, let's, I mean, I'm okay with it going straight to Planning Commission. I think because we've already, we've had a couple of these sessions and we've all heard each other and we have a decent alignment amongst ourselves that I would say go straight to planning. I'm kind of looking, I'm seeing a couple nods and then, yeah, go ahead, Chair.
Yes, Senator Chair, I do have one question in terms of developing the next steps. If they're going to move forward, is draft, is on, excuse me, drafting a policy and running like a Monte Carlo-like simulator to the previous projects, I mean, development projects that have been done, to kind of get to understand where, as Matulik has said, where the formula is that how is this feasible based on the tools that we already have that exist? Kind of combining those together. So some of the tools that we have, like the streamlining, open up the land, your tax credits or in lieu fees, if the zoning policy or inclusionary zoning policy was to go into place, how that would have looked on a previous project that has been done? And to kind of understand what that formula, as Matulik was saying, I mean, Councilmember Matulik, excuse me, how that would actually look, so we can kind of figure out the characteristics of our city and different development projects for the various districts. Is that something that could be feasible or work through?
If I may, yeah, that is feasible. I think what I heard the council saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is you want staff to come back with some more targeted recommendations, not as much a list of, an undifferentiated list of menu of options, but one more round of analysis and some targeted recommendations addressing the various comments that we heard tonight. And it's perfectly feasible to run a kind of an alternative scenario analysis of some recent projects to see what types of linkage or in lieu fees would have been feasible for some of the recent developments. So we're happy to come back with that and take that ordinance right to the Planning Commission, if that's the will of the council.
I think it is. And then if the council can just be kept in the loop, either through the City Manager Report or Councilmember Tulak is the liaison to Planning Commission, I think we can have it go straight to Planning Commission. I'm seeing nods. So unless we're, we have any other direction we need. Director Pollock, do you have any other questions for us?
I just wanted to clarify, typically when we do something like this, we also want to do some level of public engagement. So I think what I was originally thinking is that we might have a draft that we would put out for a short public comment period before we take it to Planning Commission. So I don't want to slow down the process, though, either. So if that's acceptable, maybe we'll go ahead and move forward with that.
That sounds good to me. I'm kind of a public engagement, having a public comment period on the draft ordinance. Yeah, I'm seeing a majority, I'm seeing a majority of nods on the Planning Commission and a majority of nods on the council. So that sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
And if we have nothing else needed, I want to thank everyone again, our presenters, our consultant, our planning team, our members of the community that spoke, and everybody on both boards. We will go ahead and adjourn at whatever time it is. Somewhere in the ballpark of, I can't see it, there's a glare, 8:35 PM.